Called to order the Board of County Commissioners for the Regular Meeting, April 21st, 2016. Welcome, everybody. Please join us for the Plenage of Allegiance and your salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as our first law. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the symbol of our friendship among my fellow citizens.
Thank you, everybody, for coming today. First item on the agenda today is approval of the regular meeting agenda. Madam Managers, are there anything that needs to be changed?
Yes, Commissioner.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, six, five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item at more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the County Manager's Office, so at this time, the Commissioner will stand for public input. Now, I'm going to start with the Sheriff, because I know he has a group of kids here that probably need to get back to school.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanted to introduce some of my staff that participated in the DARE program this year with several of those schools in our community. I do have three of my staff that participate in this. The leader of it, actually, is Sergeant Frank Gomez, Deputy Rigan Aguirre, and Corporal Manuel Maldeanado. They go through our area schools and teach this important program to our children that helps them deal with peer pressures, dealing with situations when they get regarding drugs and bullying and schools and that. So, you know, I want to thank them for what they do. I want to thank the schools for allowing us to be in the schools, and I want to especially thank the parents and the children that participate. This year, we concentrated heavily on our 5th grade. That's mainly what we deal with, but we also went into some of the schools and participated with the younger children, just to, you know, get them acquainted with law enforcement, teach them a little bit about what goes on in the community. So, you know, I want to thank my staff for doing that. They do really well. They're really well appreciated by the, by the community. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Sergeant Frank Gomez, please.
Good morning. Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Administration, and Audience. First of all, thank you all for allowing us to come up here and now recognize our students. In January, we kicked off the DARE program with Harrison Smith Elementary, 5th grades, Cliff Schools, and also Calvary Chapel. And so, we had three different graduations, three different SA winners that won mountain bikes and pizza parties that we threw for all three schools. Commissioner Hall, thank you for being at our graduation in Cliff. It was a blast. We had fun.
I agree with that. That was fun.
So, I just wanted to recognize our students, thank the Sheriff, and all our sponsors, our anonymous donors, our Commissioners, and all for supporting us with the DARE program. It's been great. We have fun with it, and we're looking forward for August, and once we kick it off again. And some of our students that I'd like to recognize are SA winners from Harrison Smith. First of all, is Jaden Pierpont. She was our top SA winner. Matthew Garrison, Rudy Vazquez, and Michaela Martinez, all from Harrison Smith. Audrey Mandala was our SA winner from Calvary Chapel. And we're waiting on a student. I'm not sure if he's going to show up or not, but Chubu Odosa here was our Cliff SA winner. So, I was just going to say, just introduce themselves and just talk really quick, and we'll be out of here. Thank you.
My name is Jaden, my name is Jaden Pierpont, and I thought, I'm from 5th grade Harrison Smith Elementary School, and I thought DARE was really awesome. It taught me a lot of stuff to use when I'm later on, in later on.
You're awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Matthew Garrison from Mrs. Hutcheson's class, 5th grade, in Harrison Smith Elementary. I thought DARE was really fun. We learned a lot of stuff about drugs and bullying and peer pressure, and so, I learned a whole lot.
Thank you, Detective.
My name is Ricky Vazquez, and I'm from 5th grade, and I'm in Charlotte Gears class from Harrison Smith. And DARE teaches me a lot to not bully people and to help me when I grow up.
Thank you.
My name is Michaela Martinez, and I'm from Harrison Smith Elementary School, Miss Huguenz, 5th grade class, and I thought DARE was very helpful to me, because it teaches me about how drugs can be very, very bad for your body, and you can have, and it's a lot of peer pressure and bullying, and it'll just help me later on in my life.
Thank you.
My name is Audrey, and I'm from Mrs. Mills, 5th grade, Calvary Christian Academy. I thought DARE was really fun, because it'll help me later on in life.
My name is Chubu Odosa from Cliff Elementary, 5th grade. I thought DARE was pretty good. It'll help other people to follow in the police's footsteps and help them in the future.
Thank you. You know, this young man, he gave a dissertation in Cliff, and it's, he's ready for his doctorate, I think.
Again, just in closing, Sheriff, thank you so much for allowing us, allowing the Commissioners, allowing us to participate with the DARE program in our schools, our administration in the schools and teachers. They have a lot on their plates, and for allowing us to still go and teach the DARE program, I mean, shows the dedication of what they have. So, again, thank you all, and have a great day.
Sergeant, why don't you have all the kids come up, and you guys get a picture with them for the, for the press? Thank you. Okay. Next, I'm going to call on Gabe Huguenz from the Forest Service. No wards?
Do you want to page him, please?
No, no, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Randy told me we just have three different departments working on the burn. And so I see that as a huge success, you know. Typically, we don't get to work with those guys until we have a wildfire. And, you know, it's an emergency and we're responding as fast as we can and getting there. And we don't know one another very well. And so, you know, this, these prescribed burns, they're, they're on our schedule, on our pace. And we get a chance to meet with them beforehand and then, you know, just get to know one another and then we work together on the, on the prescribed burns. So it's been a huge success that way. And so, basically, that's it for Cameron Creek. Any questions?
Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Go get some kids from Silverhead.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there any further public input? Going once, twice? Okay, really. Next item on the agenda is minutes. Approval or disapproval of the March 17th, 2016 regular meeting minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the March 17th, 2016 regular minutes.
The motion is second to approve the March 17th, 2016 minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports. Linda, would you go through the expenditure report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have an expenditure report for approval, which includes AP checks totaling $2,430,284.93. Included in these AP checks is a check to Engineers Incorporated. This is for services provided for the North Hurley Road and Rosedale Road Colonias and the North Hurley Waste Water Project. Total of that check is $67,824.70. A check to Stoven Construction, and this is for payment number five and number six for the conference center remodel. The total of that check is $587,823.39. There's a check to Wright Express Fleet Services for February and March fuel charges totaling A check to New Mexico Human Services Division. This is for the third quarter of the Safety Net Care Pool. That total for that check is $83,137.72. A check to New Mexico State University. And this is for the second and third quarter of the Co-op Extension 2016 contribution. And that is for $34,000. A check to Dement Electric, and this is for the North Hurley Waste Water Project, $60,929.24. A check to JNS Plumbing, and this is also for the North Hurley Waste Water Project. And the total for that check is $52,260.38. A check to High Desert Humane Society, and this is for January and March services for the animal control. This is for $15,495. A check to Arteta Fire Equipment, this is for air packs and fire equipment for the Quetzalcoatl Voluntar Fire Department, and that is for $95,352. And then we have payroll checks for pay period number six, seven, and eight. And the total payroll for those periods is $608,563.8. So the total sum of this expenditures for this period is $338,848.1.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the April 18th, 2016 expenditure report.
Nice second. There's a motion, a proper second, to approve the April 18th, 2016 expenditure report. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. New business. This is proclamation recognizing the Cobre High School Boys State Championship Wrestling Team. Danisha, will you read that for us? Okay, so we don't want to do it at all then?
No, just.
You want to wait until they're here, right?
Okay. So we should end that when we were approving the agenda.
Sorry, I forgot.
All right, so we are going to table that until May. Can I get a motion to table that proclamation?
Second.
Motion second to table. All those in favor, six, five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove of proclamation declaring April 2016 as Start By Believing Month? Danisha, can you read that proclamation?
Proclamation Start By Believing Public Awareness Campaign. Whereas the Commissioners of Grant County share critical concern for victims of sexual violence and a desire to support their needs for justice and healing. And whereas current estimates suggest no more than 20% of sexual assaults will be reported to law enforcement unless a 3% will result in the conviction and incarceration of the perpetrator. And whereas research documents that victims are far more likely to disclose their sexual assault to a friend or family member. And when these loved ones respond with doubt, shame, or blame, victims suffer additional negative effects on their physical and psychological well-being. And whereas the Start By Believing Public Awareness Campaign, a program of End Violence Against Women International, is designed to improve the responses of friends, family members, and community professionals so they can help victims to access supportive resources and engage the criminal justice system. Now therefore, be it resolved on behalf of the county commissioners hereby proclaim in concert with the local city police department, Silver Regional Sexual Assault Supportive Services, and Sexual Assault Nurse Examiners our shared support of the Start By Believing Public Awareness Campaign. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by all members of the Grant County Commissioners that they, excuse me, that they support the Start By Believing Public Awareness Campaign being launched in the county and do hereby declare this month to be Start By Believing Month throughout Grant County.
Thank you, Danisha. So is Kelly here? Hi, Kelly, how are you? Do you have anything to say?
I just want to thank you so much for allowing us to continue our services here in Grant County and Hildago County. And as Danisha had just discussed, two-thirds of individuals do not report. And so Start By Believing Campaign is really designed to start the healing immediately as soon as they disclose. And also, they have a higher rate of completing a report to law enforcement and completing the judicial process. And I also wanted to give you guys a little bit of stats to show you how important it is in our community. We, since 2014, SASS has served approximately 220 individuals and family members of sexual violence. Since we have started the same program, we have served seven, and that is from January to current. And so we've actually provided the medical examiner services to seven individuals. And I also wanted to make sure that you all know that we are seeing an increase in referrals from collaborating agencies as well as self-referrals from people coming in and wanting services for themselves. So thank you so much for supporting this. And it is a great service and a much-needed service for our community.
Kelly, how would somebody report if they didn't want to go to an agency of law enforcement?
Well, actually, I'm really glad that you asked. Our, we have staff on call 24/7/365. And you can either come into our office at 301 West College Avenue, Suite 11, or you can call our crisis line number at 1-866-750-6474. All of our services are free and confidential.
Thank you very much. So, any other questions before we take the motion?
Thank you and your group for your service to our community. Thank you very much, because I know it's very important and a very difficult one.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you.
If you'll just stay right there, we'll present this proclamation to you. Who's going to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve proclamation declaring April 2016 as the Start By Believing Month.
Nice second.
There's a motion, a proper second, to proclaim April 2016 as Start By Believing Month. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Do I stay right here? Okay.
Yeah. Give Local Day. Danisha?
Thank you. Give Grandly, Give Local proclamation. Whereas Grant County is blessed by numerous nonprofit organizations which provide invaluable services such as sheltering our homeless, feeding our hungry, and caring for our youth. And whereas Give Grand Day, Give Local Day, May 14th, 2016, is a third community-wide giving event participation in the National Day of Giving hosted locally by the Southwest New Mexico Nonprofit Coalition and the Grant County Community Foundation, online at www.grantcountycommunityfoundation.org. And whereas Give Grandly, Give Local Day shall grow the spirit of giving and raise as much money as possible for the nonprofits in Grant County. And whereas through the Grant County Community Foundation and the Southwest New Mexico Nonprofit Coalition Partners, Give Grandly, Give Local Day shall inspire the public to support our nonprofit organizations on this one day, May 14th, 2016, online at www.givgrandly.org. Now therefore, be it resolved, now therefore, at the request of Chairman Brett Caston, be it proclaimed by the Commission of the County of Grant that May 14th, 2016 is the third ever Give Grand Day, Give Local Day. And be it further proclaimed that for all citizens, it is the official day of providing financial support for all of the causes that continue to move our city forward.
Thank you, Danisha. Is Ms. Connors here?
How are you guys today? Introduce yourselves, I don't know you. Hi, I'm Martin Miller, and this is Joni Connors. And we are here to, on behalf of the Grant County Community Foundation Board and the 47 nonprofits participating in Give Grandly, Give Local 2016. We thank you for supporting this endeavor for the third year in a row. Last year, we made history. We raised the most money ever raised in Grant County in 24 hours, $93,707. This year, we intend to make history again. Please join us at Silver City Farmer's Market from 8:30 to 2:30 on Saturday, May 14th, for information and music. Remember, give a little, give a lot, give local, give grandly on May 14th.
Can I get a motion to approve this proclamation?
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the proclamation declaring May 14th, 2016 as Give Grandly, Give Local Day. Second.
There's a motion, a second, to proclaim May 14th, 2016 as Give Grandly, Give Local Day. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Can we give this to you?
Okay. to the counties. And we have the Executive Director Steve Kulpelman and our current President Sharon Stover. Good morning, Sharon.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
How are you?
I'm good, actually. I got to fly in this morning and got a dynamite picture of the mine.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
It's always a nice little flyer.
Yeah, it's a beauty, with a gorgeous picture.
Hi. Good to see you.
Good morning. Just for the record, my name is Sharon Stover, and I have the honor of serving as your president of New Mexico Association of Counties. Currently, I serve as the county clerk for Los Alamos, where I've lived for over 30 years. And I was born and raised though in the Pulaki Valley. I've served a couple terms on what we call our county council, same thing as the commission. We are, Los Alamos is a Class H county. We wear both hats, both the city and county, so we see the benefits of both. But I wanted to come down here to talk. NMAC was established in 1936, when Franklin D. Roosevelt was our president and our state's population was just about 500,000. And NMAC's mission from that day, and it's on, I don't know if we can pull up our, do you have our PowerPoint? And nobody has that? Okay. NMAC's mission from day one has always been to have counties improve their own affairs for their constituents. We are on the front lines as commissioners and know what's best for our citizens. So on the front page there, that's the NMAC office, that's kind of the hub. And I know many of you have spent many hours, I served with Commissioner Caston, and now I have the pleasure of serving with Commissioner Hall. So anybody, though, that is in Santa Fe, particularly during the legislative session, come in, meet with staff, put your feet up. This is the place to be during this session when you're not wanting to be at the session. We felt that it was important in this day of Snapchats and texting and emails to kind of put a face to what NMAC is about, the programs and services provided. But most important, and, Mr. Chairman, I hope at the end of this presentation we get some feedback, we wanted to hear what are counties' issues? What are your issues that you're facing? And we're going to take that back to the board and just kind of give an overview of where counties are at as a state. One thing, though, we do know that the success of NMAC, although it's an organization, it really depends on all of us working together. And we saw that this last session with some of the legislative bills that were being discussed. Steve and I, our executive director, are going to tag-team our presentation. And so I will have him take over from here in just a minute. I want to go take you to page three of our presentation. And I want to point out that in New Mexico counties, we employ about 10,500 people. You combine that with what cities do, which is about, almost the same number, it's about a $2 billion industry for the state. We vary in population from Harding County that has 707 people to Burnaliela that's over 673,000 folks. So for those of you who have been on the board, and I know Randy was also on our board, you know the challenges that the board faces in trying to have, when you're dealing with a lot of rural counties and a lot of the bigger urban counties, how do you meet all those needs? Another challenge for us, I believe, in New Mexico, our term, we are term limited. There are 44 states in the nation that do not have term limits. Compare that to the cities, as well as our legislators that don't. I think that kind of puts us sometimes at a disadvantage in that we're term limited. As we go around, we ourselves are being educated. One of the things we found out about Grant County is that you're a year-round birding destination, and you have a reputation for being a bird's paradise. And I saw your dumpster, your recycling, and it has all of these pictures of birds. And I know Commissioner Hall is a bird avious. So I want to think that's pretty neat. Steve, as I mentioned, we're going to tag-team, so now it's his turn to take over. Thank you.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. It's great to be down here again. And the only thing, I'm sorry I didn't bring my bike down, because the bicycling here is fantastic. And I understand you've got a big, well, I know that you've got the HeLa coming up, the professional racing. And then I hear you're going to have a new race in October, I was told? So I'm going to get that put on my calendar early. So, in any case, you know, I've been working with local government now for about 25 years. And the one thing that strikes me in New Mexico is the burden that's put on county government. You know, you folks really are, I think, the most effective government that we have, local government. Yet the state legislature seems to think that it's okay to continue to put unfunded mandates and burdens on county government. And, you know, for example, counties maintain 29,000 miles of roads in New Mexico. And how many roads do you folks maintain here in your county?
700-ish.
Seven, okay. So 29,000 miles collectively, right? Cities maintain about 15, about half, and the state maintains about 7,500. So we have a gas tax that was put in place and hasn't been increased since the 1980s, 17 cents a gallon. So you figure, well, the counties maintain just about half of the roads, so we must get half the money. Well, 17 cent gas tax, we get 2 cents. Cities get 2 cents, state gets 13 cents. We have all these unfunded mandates, right? We've got the state district court, we've got to provide security, we've got to provide them a place to stay. The DA, it's the state attorney general, counties are responsible. State health office, who's responsible? Of course, counties. State Medicaid program, the 116th GRT, counties pay that. Counties pay the 112th for the Safety Net Care Pool, part of the Medicaid program to help our hospitals. You've got SORNA, you've got all these unfunded mandates that the sheriff's office has. But the biggest problem, I think, that we have and the most challenging are county jails. Okay? County jails in virtually every community are de facto mental health hospitals. And I really have to applaud you folks, because I know you're building a facility, a treatment facility, I understand. That would be fantastic. I wish that all our communities could do that. But again, it comes down to county government doing it, right? You'd think that the state would have an extensive behavioral health system, no. Counties are the ones that do it. We spend now, it's almost $275 million on a recurring basis to operate our county jails. That doesn't even include liability and insurance, capital costs and reserves. We're one of two states in the entire country that we actually have more people in our county jails than there are in the state penitentiary. Because in most states, county jails really just hold misdemeanors. But here, we, you know, we hold people convicted of crimes as long as they're sentenced to less than a year. We have people who are in jail or awaiting trial on really serious, serious crimes. They may sit in our jail for two, three, and four years awaiting trial. The county has to ante up for that. Interestingly, we have twice as many women in our county jails as there are in the state penitentiary. And I have a trivia question. What year do you think the statute, the legislature passed the statute, which has virtually been unchanged, that requires counties to house everybody accused of a crime? Any idea what year?
36.
1936? 1865. Right, think about 1865, when Raul was the sheriff back then in his prior lifetime, right? Had his 10-gallon, had his keys, right? He fed the inmates bread and water, I remember that. And, you know, today, not only do you have, you know, three square meals a day, have to be nutritionally balanced, but, you know, the medical and the behavioral health costs and the difficulty, because most of our rural counties don't even have a psychiatrist or a psychologist in the community, let alone the jail. So I really applaud you folks, because I think, you know, again, you're providing the essential services, law enforcement, assessor, elections, roads and the like, yet you're really not given the resources, I think. Considering what you have, I think you do a fantastic job. Real quickly, page five and six. New Mexico Association of Counties, we provide services, we support county government. That's all we do is county government. We don't do cities, we don't do school districts. Every county is a member of NMAC, and each county has one elected official on our board. As Sharon indicated, Commissioner Hall is now on our board. We worked for quite a few years with Commissioner Caston. He was also the chair of our tax policy committee. Raul Torrieto was on our board, and so was Randy. So you folks have been real involved, and we appreciate that. We do a lot of different types of work for counties. On the legislative side, we have two full-time lobbyists, Brian Moore and Tasha Young. And Tasha actually is not going to be returning next year. But we do all kinds of work. We have two folks who specialize only in jails. Manny Romero, one of the people who works for us, is a nationally-known expert in detention and corrections. He works, does some special projects for the Department of Justice. Art Murphy. Sal Baragiola, loss prevention manager, has been in law enforcement, rather, for over 30 years. Grace Phillips, our general counsel, specializing in HR and legal issues. Joya Sparson does a lot of work with intergovernmental, federal, and state level. Taylor Horst is our risk management director. We run three self-insurance programs on behalf of counties and do pretty much all of the work in-house, everything from loss prevention to underwriting. Also, Santiago Chavez, our finance director. We do a lot of outreach. If you have issues, questions, you don't know where to turn, call us. We love working with counties, that's what our passion is. We work, you know, we've worked a lot over the years with Charlene and Abby. And really, we enjoy doing that, and that's why we're here. So appreciate the opportunity. I'm going to turn it back over to Sharon.
Thank you. Just before we leave, page six, I just wanted to say something on a, I say this in full truth, I've been in county government since 1979. And we work both with the league and, yeah, that was two, yeah, thank you. I'll pay you later. Thank you, thank you. We work both with the NMAC and the league as our county. Our dues to NMAC are $17,000. Our dues to New Mexico Municipal League, great, both organizations, solid, $77,000. But it's not just the money. What you see here and what you hear from all of the staff is a great deal of personal commitment and dedication. They really are there to help counties. So I hope you use them as a resource and that, know that they are available. I'm going to move on to page six, the policy statement. This year, what the board did is we took what was like a 38-page document, and it had all these different policies in it, kind of mixed around. And we said, let's kind of summarize them. And we did it into eight key areas, beginning on page six of those. I'm not going to read them, each one, I'll hit the headlines of them. And what we wanted to do was make sure that these policy statements, if you would, pass the smell test for any kind of proposed legislation that would be going forth. So we had county government, economic development, elections and accountable government, energy, environment, natural resources, healthcare and human services, infrastructure, justice and public safety, and taxation and revenue. I just want to, for me, the two bullets that kind of stand out are under county government. And Steve hit this a little bit as well. We oppose preemption of local authority, and we oppose unfunded mandates that have been given to us by the state. Second to that, the board also kind of wanted to take a new approach in developing its legislation. And what we did this year was, in July, the, as the interim committees are going on across the state, and we set up our, in June, for the conference, it's going to be held in Hobbs, all the affiliates will get together, develop their legislation. And so in July, what we did is we had the executive committee, which I know Commissioner Caston has served on, but also we brought in the manager, affiliate chair, and all the elected chairs, so the assessor chair, the clerk chair. And they spent a day doing more discussion on the proposed legislation and then made a recommendation to the board. It's hard when you have 33 people trying to do this. And it was, and the other thing we did is we made sure that any legislation going forth had to have a two-thirds majority vote by the board. It made it easier. When you have a piece of legislation, and Steve will go over this in a little bit, we have 16 to 17, you know, 33 counties, it's really tough for Brian and Tasha, or for anyone, to try to ch-. to try to champion legislation when it's so close. So we wanted a two-thirds majority vote. The next thing that we did, I'm moving on now to page nine. There were policy committees that were established under President Wendell Boswick from Curry County. And these are basically with members who have, you know, maybe they're subject experts or they have a high interest in it. I'm not going to read each of the charters, I'm going to give you a brief update of each of these committees. And what they do is they play a large role in the legislation as it's being developed throughout the year. And they're appointed by the president. So next year, when, well, now in June, when Tyler Massey becomes our president, he will make those appointments. So the criminal justice policy committee, we had like a three-hour meeting this past Monday, and it's great that Commissioner Hall is on there. And I want to tell you kind of why I'm chair of that committee and why I got tied to it is on the juvenile justice. J-Jack was here in February, and Grant County hosted us, and it was great. And it was, it kind of spoke to what the good work your county's doing. Because we had Judge Robinson, we had the superintendent of schools, we had Commissioner Hall, their county manager was there, and Bianca. We got to, we had the commons area and got to see that. So all the people across the state dealing with juvenile issues came to Grant County and got to see those issues, or see the good work that's being done at the commons. But for this criminal justice committee, we talked about, Steve mentioned Sonora, the forfeiture legislation, risk assessment instruments, and of course, SJR 4 that Steve will, SJR 1 that Steve will talk about later on relative to the bail bonds issue. Second committee, that one I'm passionate about, as you can tell, is the Economic Development and Infrastructure Policy Committee. They had a meeting this last Wednesday. This is the first time for this committee. And when you go to the conference in June in Hobbs, there is going to be a big focus on economic development. We're hearing that that's something counties want. There's going to be two panels. The tagline for the conference this year is blazing the trail. So the tagline for these panels is going to be igniting economic growth. And the first piece of the panel is going to be pieces for economic growth. Kind of what are the tools that counties may need? Even we've heard from some counties that didn't really know what LITA was about. So some basics and then some higher-level tools out there. And then the second part of that will be a panel that's kind of putting all the economic pieces together and some success stories. Our third committee is the healthcare policy committee. That is chaired by Commissioner Stefanics from Santa Fe. And you've all been asked to identify what your health needs are, and that committee's going to be meeting on May 5th. The Native American Policy Committee, that was developed by, appointed by Paula Garcia, president last year. And that committee has done some really good work. They presented it at NACO, and they're actually now going to be, as part of the Edge Program, there's going to be a curriculum tied to Native Americans. So we better, we can better understand their issues, and they can better understand ours. The Public Lands and Natural Resources Policy Committee, that is chaired by Commissioner Duffy, and they just met this week as well. And they had a presentation from New Mexico Tech Bureau on water, understanding the watering issues and where these set is, how that impacts that. And also had an update from BLM. There's a rule out there that's kind of vague that will be impacting counties, so they are discussing that. The Tax Policy Committee, you, Commissioner Caston, used to chair that, it's now being chaired by Commissioner O'Malley, and they're going to be meeting. GRT reform and gas tax is some of their issues. At this point now, Steve will take over and talk about the legislation that we dealt with this past year.
Thanks, Sharon. Page 12 and 13 is a summary of some of the legislation from last session. It was a really difficult session. There was, obviously, the budget issue for the state was primarily the focus. We had a couple of bills that we were looking to get some funding. One was the County Facility Detention Reimbursement Act. I think a lot of you remember NMAC and San Miguel County brought a lawsuit against the State Department of Corrections about nine years ago regarding responsibility for parole violators. We won that lawsuit that same year legislature passed the Detention Facility Act. They funded it for $5 million for three categories of offenders, parole violators, dual parole probation, and those convicted of felonies awaiting transport to the state penitentiary. Those three categories cost the county about $6 million. We have $2.5 million now. It's been, that fund has been shrunk down, and it may be time for another lawsuit. In any case, we were hoping to get more money, we got less. EMS, we've got a huge problem in the state. Again, counties are primarily responsible for providing emergency medical services. We do it generally with volunteers. We were looking to do a comprehensive statewide study, House Bill 186. That $300,000 appropriation to Department of Health was taken out, and that bill didn't go anywhere. We always play a lot of defense. House Bill 233 was a bill, this is the third year in a row that Representative Harper has made a run on the county Hold Harmless TRT. I think a lot of you remember, this was taken away from counties, the state distribution for counties over certain population and cities over certain population. The state granted us a three-eighths authority. 19 counties have imposed at least one or more increments, including Grant County. And again, the counties need the funds because, again, we have to provide so many of these essential services. I think almost every county's property tax revenues have been flat over the last five years. We're not getting any additional funds. In any case, the argument is, while the counties are getting more money than they need, legislature three years in a row has not changed that bill. This last year, what the House Bill 233 would have done is it would have penalized every county that has imposed an increment, including Grant County. Right now, because you've imposed the increments, your state distribution for food and medicine is phased out over 15 years. What Representative Harper's bill would have done is it would have stopped the payment immediately. And I think, if my figures are right here, Grant County would have lost about half a million dollars, Charlene, isn't that right? So this was a huge, it would have cost counties about $20 million, would have cost municipalities about another 15 million. And what NMAC did with the counties is, we had, this bill was going to Representative Harper's committee. He chairs the House Tax Policy Committee Ways and Means. We did a full-court press. We alerted all the counties who had a representative on that committee, and they did an amazing job, text messages, phone calls, emails, and that bill never saw the light of day. Because when county government is united and we work together, I think we are probably the strongest lobbying arm in the state. You know, especially the elected officials, it makes a huge difference. But again, you know, if things don't turn around on the state budget, we can expect there's going to be another run on those distributions next year. The other area that I think we have to be real careful about is the indigent fund. Because if those funds aren't encumbered, and you've got reserves, I think that's fair game. I think a lot of you know, House Bill 311 was the bill that they, the state pretty much swept every single account that they had that had excess funds, including the county DWI program. They took another million and a half that they transferred to AOC for drug courts, and they took $3 million out of that fund for the general fund. They made a run also, they wanted to take $3 million from the E-911 fund. And the lobbying efforts, especially the E-911 directors, was pretty intense, and they ended up leaving that money in. But again, I think we're fair game, and you know how it goes, when the federal government, things get tight, the money stops flowing to the states. When the states get tight, it's down on local government, and so we have to be very vigilant. Just a few other things real quickly, I'm not going to go into too many of these bills. I think a lot of you probably aware of House Bill 270, it's not on here. There was a Court of Appeals decision, I know this really affects a lot of counties that border Arizona, Colorado or Texas. But the court holding was that an individual went to get medical care in Texas, there was a problem, wanted to bring a lawsuit, brought the lawsuit to New Mexico. Court of Appeals said, oh, that's okay, the Texas doctor is subject to New Mexico law. All of a sudden, we had doctors in neighboring states saying, we're not going to treat New Mexico residents, because this is crazy, you know, I have no connection to New Mexico, I don't want to have to, and New Mexico's laws are a lot more, how should I say, generous for plaintiffs when it comes to medical malpractice. So legislature passed House Bill 270. It has a three-year window, and it expires, but the idea now is that a doctor can contract with a patient, say, if there's a problem, the Texas, Arizona, Colorado courts will, law will apply. That will be honored by our courts. That case is up in front of the Supreme Court, hopefully they'll reverse the decision. But I know a lot of folks, probably in Grant County, go to Arizona for healthcare from time to time, and this would have been a real problem. Just one last thing I want to bring up, SJR 1, Senate Joint Resolution 1 on bail bonds. This is the only constitutional provision that will be on the ballot in November. Two parts to it, and NMAC lobbied pretty hard to support it. First part, right now, our constitution, which is based on a 1600 Pennsylvania provision, pretty much doesn't allow judges not to grant bond in almost every case. Capital case, other than that, they almost have to do it. A lot of times, they set it pretty high, but sometimes family members come in, they put a house up. And so it's a real problem, because we have dangerous people getting back on the street. This constitutional amendment would allow judges, district court judges, to not grant bail if the prosecuting attorney can show by clear and convincing evidence that the individual is a danger and that there are no reasonable conditions that will allow that person to be released. Second part of this is, we have people in our jail, as you know, that are indigent, don't have money, get picked up for a real low-level offense and can't bond out. And so the second part says that if a person is not a flight risk and they're not a danger, they're indigent, they can't pay, they can't be held solely because of their indigency. So we're hoping that this constitutional amendment does get through. We think it really will help county jails and at least allow judges to release some of these folks who aren't dangerous and don't have the funds. Real quickly, page 14, federal legislative initiatives. The pill payments, of course, is a huge issue. We do not have permanent funding anymore in the federal government, we're working closely with NACO on that. But I know your county relies on pilt, guess, it's about almost $2 million a year. Also, secure rural schools, which we're really concerned about that not getting funded. Grant County gets about $713,000 a year on that. The problem is if secure rural schools goes away, the way the funding formula works is our pill payments will be drastically reduced. Right now, New Mexico gets about $35 million, because a lot of that money will then go to the Northwest states. So it's really important that we get our federal delegation and the Congress to support permanent funding for SRS and pilt. And our federal delegation strongly supports those bills. We had the MAP 21 reauthorization, $6 billion was appropriated by Congress for surface transportation. We're hoping a lot of that money does get funneled to the states and into local government. NMAC actively worked to oppose regulation waters of the US. Think a lot of you are aware, this would be a real disaster for ranchers and farmers. It would put almost every waterway under federal control, require, you know, the regulatory requirements. So that's being held up now, and we're hoping we can, that will never see the light of day. And then finally, NACO has a stepping up initiative, which is trying to reduce the number of people with mental health problems in county jails. Finally, page 15, real quickly. You folks are in all three of our self-insurance pools, law enforcement, multi-line workers' comp. You've been in workers' comp since day one, and one of the good things about the pools is we take advantage of the economies of scale. We get much less expensive rates for excess insurance. When we have good years in the pool, we return money to the counties. And I went back, and in the workers' comp, they've returned over $355,000 to Grant County for the times you've had really good experience. So we really appreciate your participation in the self-insurance pools. We think that's one more benefit that you get being in NMAC. And with that, I'll turn it back to our president to wrap up.
Thank you. Moving on to page 16. This is a new program, NMAC is looking at and trying to provide better services. It's voluntary. Counties can buy, county employees can buy these benefits at a lower cost anywhere. And it's benefits for long-term care disability that you used to be able to get through the state that are no longer available. They can not be denied, they can take them with them when they leave. And someone from the Daniels Foundation Insurance, have they contacted you? Okay, so we're hoping to roll that out and that you would participate in that. It doesn't cost anything, it's a benefit for your employees. On page 18, oh, excuse me, page 17, is the professional development. And this is NMAC conferences, I talked a little bit about the conference, upcoming conference in June where all the affiliates get together, develop the resolutions. It's going to be in, Lee County is going to host it, and they have promised everything, including outdoor air conditioning. So we hope everybody can come and, and they really are working hard to get that going. Of course, the BIPOL that will be held for newly-elected folks in January. County College, New Mexico Edge, I know several folks from the counties take participation in that, and that's been a good partnership since 2004. Steve mentioned NACO, over 3,000 counties are out there. NACO, if you haven't got on their webpage, I suggest that you do, they have a tool that's kind of a one-stop shop that gives data profiles. They're coming out with Why Counties Matter and this stepping up initiative that Steve spoke about. I think there's about six counties in New Mexico that have taken this on. They, as well as we, have committees and caucuses that you can get on board with. Want to give a shout out to, we have a staff member who participates in that, and I lost, Elizabeth Alred is on the healthcare affiliate for NACO. So NACO has conferences and, or committees that if you're interested in participating. One other comment on the legislation, and I know Commissioner Hall will remember this, for SJR 1 on the bail bonds, we hope that passes. It was, you know, finally, both the bail bonds folks in counties got together on it and came to a compromise. And we're, NMAC is going to put out like a ghost letter, a draft letter, that maybe you as leaders in the community could send out to the media, send out to your residents to get support of that legislation, because we do think it's important. And also just to educate people, because when they see it, they may not know what it's all about. So we hope you will play a role with that. With that, Mr. Chairman, we really, you know, we wanted to tell you about the services, but more importantly, we wanted to hear from you of what the issues your county is facing and how can NMAC be a better partner? And I've enjoyed working with you as well.
Do you guys have any?
Well, I don't know if you've had enough time, because, you know, while you were talking and I was taking some notes here, I remember, the best way to describe it, we have this pie that these three commissioners have to work with, and we can slice it so thin. And I think that's been the toughest job that I've had as a commissioner, is that we slice that pie, and you want to help everyone, and then there's some of those that really need help, and we run out of pie. And so it's a huge issue, and I know each of these commissioners have talked about it during our meetings, wanting to give additional money or some money to someone, and we can't. But, you know, just the unfunded mandates, it's scary to me, is that, not, you know, not only that, but we're, you know, we're coming down the pike, we're hearing more and more where the state is short of money and they want to pick our pockets in the county. That's a real concern of mine, because that's something that we can't control. I mean, we can control going up to the legislature and talking to him, but just to do it, that's difficult. Of course, like most counties, you know, we have these roads. Roads is a huge issue, but one of the reasons I have a difficult time, because these two guys, they push it on me. They tell them all to call me outside of my district. But it's a real issue, because, you know, it's a safety issue for the community, for the citizens who are using that, and try to stay up with them, plus with our budget, it's very, very difficult. And substance abuse, we talked about that through the Tucasa program that we're building now, and, you know, we got to give, it's not just the county government. These are the citizens are putting this together through grocery receipts, it's come out of their pockets, and we appreciate them. But, you know, we got to stay up with that, we're not going to be... We're not going to be able to do the inpatient completely, so we're going to work on that further. And keeping up with the facilities, we continue to work with that. I mean, I always take it too far, but like the district court, you know, we're mandated by statute to do that, and we're getting ready to get red-tagged and trying to find the money, take it from roads and other places so we can do do that. And so just staying up with the facilities alone. Detention centers, probation and parole violators, the state people who are in jail, in our jails, it's tough enough for us to stay up with just our locals, but yet taking care of the state also. And then for, you know, for them to cut us from 5,000 to 25, or 2,000, 25, has been just, it's going to be dead, it was, getting that alone is difficult. Let's see, I think that, I have a whole bunch here, but I'm going to stop there and let the other commissioners discuss it.
I didn't even mention probation violators. Probation violators cost counties about $40 million. A probation violator, on average, gets put in the county jail, they're not even eligible for bond, they sit for 70 days on average. It's breaking the bank, and it's really not fair. So you, you know, I forgot to bring that up, but that's a good point.
You know, Director of our dispatches, that just had a meeting, and it's just sad what we're having to live with as far as dispatching, and then, of course, then they put other mandates on us, what we have to do, and I don't know where we're going to get the money. It's tough. So all these mandates that we have, we're having to pay for, and Rob Peter to pay Paul.
I think Commissioner Hall nailed it in the head. I mean, all these unfunded mandates are really eating us up, and, I mean, to me, it's, the big thing is our jail, you know, just eating us alive, and that's basically it. Did a good job.
I too want to just reiterate what Judge, Commissioner Hall said. One thing I would add to that is the GRT reset, and I will be attending the tax meeting, at least by phone if not in person.
Excellent.
So those are the things. I got your list, but you already had your list.
Actually, we heard a few more, but the jails is something consistently that we have heard the drain on counties.
Obviously, the safety net care pool has been a disaster for three years, and our hospitals being underfunded. It's just as flat being underfunded. And the people that attend these meetings and listen to them on Katz have heard me say that over and over and over, whether it be detention centers or safety net care pool. But the GRT reset and the legislature finally quit being Big Brother and letting us run our own counties as we see fit, which would be nice.
Mr. Chairman, is there anything NMAC could be doing better, or keep doing, or doing less of?
Well, we're going to miss Tasha, hire a good lobbyist.
Yeah, and we are going to miss Tasha. And Brian Moore, as you know, is, both of them have done a great job.
And Tito before that?
Yeah, and Tito, yeah.
I really think the presentation you gave today is so, so important, because we set up here month after month preaching just what you talked about, and I think pretty soon it becomes stale, and people say, well, that's just these guys up here who really aren't in tune. But we are in tune. You know, it's a great organization that we belong to, you folks, and just the unity that we have in trying to come together and serve our public is so important. I don't know, some people think we leave them out, but it's not that we don't care. We just run out of money.
Well, we're going to miss Tasha, that's for sure, and appreciate your all's experience. Steve, you've been there a long time. I was on the executive board when I was county clerk back in 98, and you were there back then, and we appreciate everything you've done for us. And hopefully, we can get somebody in there that lobby their behind off like Tasha does. Tasha does a great job.
Yeah.
I literally lost 25 back then.
Just, you know, we are going to do something special for Tasha at the, in Lee County. Is that, yeah, there's a big, going to be some, a good moment for Tasha, we hope. So we hope that you will join in that celebration. And with that, Commissioner Chair, thank you for this opportunity. Appreciate it.
You betcha.
You guys, you guys have a nice rest of the day. So next on the agenda is Jack County. Yeah, they did a good job, they did. Are you ready to roll? We need to get you set up.
No, we're, I'm all set up. What a treat, Steve, I've known you for many, many years, and Sharon, for her being in since 1979. I got in in 1981. So the counties, it's really taken care of us. Look at how great she looks. But thank you, Steve. Siva has actually, well, the NMAC has actually come in and helped out some of the elected officials, and they're very instrumental in everything that we do, not only as the treasurer, as the assessor, but Steve, you're a heck of a guy.
I was 11 years old back then. And he's the reason we don't have enough money.
You know? Well, Commissioner Caston, Chairman, I have a 47-page document for my presentation, so are you okay with that?
No.
No, I was just going to go briefly, if there's anything else. Thank you very much. I'm going to be brief. I did break it down for the 2017 valuation maintenance program. My main thing is being fair and equitable. And later on, I'll probably discuss the issues with the NMAC about full disclosure and not only the 3% cap. You'll be hearing that there, Steve, especially from the assessment affiliate. Okay, on a mass appraisal, okay, we develop, and we report, okay, we have to identify the property, define the market areas, and identify the characteristics. Developing the model structure, on whenever we do these reappraisals, we actually physically go out and look at every, look at the parcels here in Grant County. I've already broken down an area where I'm going to be doing the subdivisions, and I'm going to get into that a little bit later. We do develop model structures, and the main thing, and you're going to be hearing me for the next year, year and a half, talking about these land values, because the land values here in Grant County, the last study that was done was like about 2008, and land has really dropped here in Grant County due to the economic situation. After all that, we do review the appraisal, and I would like to explain, whenever we're out there, we're not just going out there and pick, you know, going out trying to raise values and so on, because we can't due to the fact that we have that 3% cap. However, we are going to be picking up nothing but net new. What the term net new is, anything that's not been on the books, we put it on the assessment rolls. And I would like to state, there could be some places where, you know, they haven't filed any permits and so on, and those garages or additions haven't been on the tax rolls for five, six years. No, I'm not going to go back, put them on the tax rolls for five years, but the thing is, we'll put them on then for the year 2017. And once again, it's called a mass appraisal physical. On the net new portion of it, anytime we bring in more valuation on the net new compared to valuation maintenance, the net new, the more value I bring in, and like I was telling on the work session, I'm just trying to make that pie bigger. And the more value I can bring in, it helps out on the tax rate, and it actually decreases the tax rate with the more valuation that we bring. The last time there was a reappraisal, it was like about 2012, so we're due, we're due for a mass appraisal. For the media, I'm going to get with the local newspapers, and I do want to thank the local newspapers on all the articles that you've done, not only for the assessors, but also for the hiking and all the festivities that I do on the side, and thank you very much. Also, radio, we, I do public announcements of what area we're going to be at, because a lot of times when you're driving around these properties, people are always questioning what's going on, but I do get on the radio, I do get on the, with the newspaper, and let them know where exactly we're going to be at. Same with the authorities, my tocayo here, I'll let him know if I'm going to be working in an area, and let him know, just in case, if he gets any calls from, you know, the property owners. Same with the Silver City Police Department. Also, I do have a production called Luar 88 Production, and once every other week, I'm going to go ahead and give a presentation where exactly we're going to be at and what's going on. Also, an update on all the building permits and so on. The quality control, okay, let's back it up. Well, the quality of control, oh, come on, there we go. I'm used to, I'm used to, for mine, okay, the quality of control is actually how many breakdowns we're going to have. For example, the city limits, we're going to have a total of 15,780 accounts we're going to review from April until the end of the year, and I will not be putting all this valuation until the year 2017. For example, in the city limits, there are 6,900 parcels, outside the municipalities, 3,600 parcels, and in rural areas, about 5,200 parcels. Once we break that down, we do what they call a schedule, it's all either a perk chart or a delineation chart on how many workdays, breaking down of 260, holidays 12, sick leave 10, vacation 10, and days in the office, entering the data is about 152 days, and out in the field, we're looking at about 76 days. I do want to thank my staff, they've been working quite diligently on just keeping the office afloat. Our quality control is actually going to give you a complete breakdown, how much value we bring in on these subdivisions, or the increase on either the appraisals on it. So that's where it kind of breaks it down. On prepping, the fieldwork, we just get ready, I was going to show, but I want to, like I said, I'm just going to push it a little bit more on this, okay? When we go out in the field, we actually have our own identification cards, and we do deliver our business cards, we do have to take photographs of the buildings, and we do measure the buildings, and once again, fair and equitable, I want to use that more than anything else. We do have four different kinds of vehicles that we're going to be out there. It's going to be a 2005 Jeep, they're all white vehicles, Jeep Liberty, 2013 Explorer, 2013 Explorer, and a 2004 Ford pickup, four-wheel drive, it's an Excel. When we go on the property, we actually leave our cars, we state our business, whenever we go into a building, a residence, if there's a minor there, and we do ask for income, we do ask for the income approach, so any rental, leasing information that really helps us out doing appraisal on the buildings. We do measure the properties, and we create what they call neighborhoods for analysis, we do take photographs of the properties, and then we do have to do what they call a mass appraisal review, and that's where I pretty much step up to do that. I've done about eight reappraisals since 1981, so I stand for any questions.
Any questions?
That's it?
Well, the thing is, I, uh...
No, no, I wouldn't ask them to go in further.
No, some rest in my head, really, but I guess we'll just go on from there. One interesting thing on top of that, we're still going to do our job, you know, with our permits and work orders and mobile homes. Let me tell you, we have a, we have a full-time, full-time job, not only doing the reappraisal, but also doing our job. The New Mexico Association of Assessing Officers was created in 1934. Thank you, guys. I'm just one year older than you guys.
But, you know, we are serious about that, and just because you're a commissioner doesn't mean that you're left out, because it said during the work session, I was sick dog, and he came over and knocked on my door and demanded to look at my property. Holy mackerel.
And you know what? He was in there coughing and hacking, and we went through every part of your house there.
I know.
Well, thank you for what you're doing, and you've done a good job, you know, considering all the stuff that happened when you first started, you've come a long way, thank you.
Thank you very much, and talking to our wonderful county manager, you're going to see a revenue, revenue and valuation, you know, adjustment. I don't want to say up or down, because I don't disclose myself.
It's all you're saying.
It's not going to be the same.
Thanks. Great job.
Thank you.
See you, guys. Thanks for coming down.
Safe travels.
Take care of that. Okay, next item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove the New Mexico Aging Long-Term Services Department 2017 severance tax bond capital outlay request application. Did you get any longer titles for that?
To approve the New Mexico Aging and Long-Term Services Department 2017 severance tax bond capital outlay request application.
Can I second? The motion is second to approve the New Mexico Aging and Long-Term Services Department 2017 severance tax bond capital outlay request application. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the appointment of one individual to the Grant County Lodgers Tax Committee? The interested applicants are Michael Bergary, John Kattis, and Victoria Chick. What's the pleasure of the commission?
Make a motion that we approve Michael D. Bergary. If I flash that, I apologize, when your name is Hall, I'm not used to different names. Whatever I can say, but I can't say his name.
Can I second? There's a motion, a second, to approve Michael Bergary to the Grant County Lodgers Tax Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye. Motion passes.
Commissioner Robinson must say it.
No, I guess I should have made that motion. Approve or disapprove 2017 State Fire Protection Funds applications for the following fire departments: Cliff Hila, Fort Bear, Grant County, Lower Members, Pino Salto, Santa Rita, Sapiro Creek, Tyrone, Upper Members, and Whiskey Creek.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the 2017 State Fire Protection Funds application for the following volunteer fire departments: Cliff Hila, Fort Bear, Grant County, Lower Members, Pino Salto, Santa Rita, Sapiro Creek, Tyrone, Upper Members, and Whiskey Creek.
Second. And motion, a second, to approve the State Fire Protection Fund for 2017. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye. Motion passes. Contracts and agreements. Approve or disapprove an agreement, A1614, for intergovernmental services agreement between the Department of Finance and Administration and the County of Grant for behavioral health prisoners.
Make a motion to approve agreement, A1614.
Can I second? The motion is second to approve agreement, A1614. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove agreement number, A1615, for direct purchase of service gender agreement between the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District and the Senior Program.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve agreement, A-16-15.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve, A1615. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye. Motion passes. That wasn't abstention, was it? Okay, did I not, I'm sorry. Approve or disapprove bid, IFBB 1511, Grant County Manager's Office renovations? I think that we had a low bidder.
Yeah, we did. That would have been a...
A recommendation of Hall Ray Construction, so I'd accept the motion.
Motion to approve the bid, IFBB 1511, to the Hall Ray Construction, Inc.
Next, second. The motion is second to approve the bidder of Hall Ray Construction to be awarded IFBB 1511. Any discussion on that motion? Isn't he one of our volunteer firefighters? I think he might be. All those in favor, signify, say aye. Motion passes. Resolutions. Approve or disapprove Resolution R1618, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement and intercept agreement, binding between Grant County, New Mexico, and the New Mexico Finance Authority to pay a principal amount of $403,684 for the purpose of financing the cost of planning, designing, constructing a new fire station for the Pino Salto Fire Department.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the Resolution R-16-18.
Second. Motion, a second, to approve R1618. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution R1619, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement and intercept agreement, binding between Grant County, New Mexico, and the New Mexico Finance Authority to pay a principal amount of $198,975 for the purpose of financing the cost of purchasing and equipping a new wildland, wildland interface fire engine for the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department.
Motion to approve, R1619, as stated by the chair.
Second. The motion, a second, to approve R1619. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye. Motion passes. At this time, we'll stand for commissioner reports. Mr. Robinson, you want to go?
Well, just want to...
Well, just want to start off by, you know, thanking everyone for, you know, working so hard for the county, doing a great job. I went to the Greenus Valley, Bolivar, the subdivision, checked out the road there, it came out really nice. Commissioner Hall did a great job. You know, they did a fantastic job, you know, you used to not be able to drive but five miles an hour.
In fact, someone said they were speeding out there now.
Well, you probably can, they did, they did a great job, they really did. Earl and them, my crazy guys, the whole crew did a really good job out there. I did also want to cover on our last PC meeting, there was some comments made that Grant County supported getting the water all the way down to Tuluna County, and I didn't make any comments, because I think most people know that we passed our resolution, what, three years ago, stating that we wanted to keep those waters within Grant County, and we continue to support that. And so I just want to make that clear, because there was some stuff put in the paper that there was comments made, and she looked at me directly, so, so you know, I just wanted to clarify that. We do want to keep our water here in Grant County, and it's here already, and we want to keep it here.
Like that, and they should take it over the continental divide, and that's just...
Yes, sir.
...what I feel.
All right, but you know, baseball started, please be aware that there's a lot of kids running around there in the Baird area with baseball little league going on, and also in the, in the golf course area, there's a lot of kids running around now because of little leagues, so it's great to see so many people participating. Also, U triple S A is going to get started over here in Ben Altimirano, so you know, please, people, drive carefully and watch out for these young kids. That's pretty much all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, you know, once again, it's budget time, and things are going to be just as tight as they have been in the past until we can get the state to loosen up some money. I went through all the things I normally talk about when the NMAC people were here. I know Charlene's going to be meeting with department heads, and then with us, maybe in some of those meetings, so get your stuff together and get your, I know the sheriff's already submitted his, and there's some others I've seen in there, so... That being said, unless anybody...
Anyway, we've had numerous meetings with Tucasa, our substance abuse program, meetings with HMS, reference to the flow chart. The flow chart is basically what we're trying to figure out as a way to move the people from whatever, wherever they are, either arrest, jail, off the street, mom and pop, from the hospital, or wherever, move them into Tucasa flow chart. So now we're having meetings with the different segments of the community, that being like the hospital, we got meetings now set up with the judiciary, and also law enforcement, that's set up, where we'll sit down with them, we'll go over a flow chart, and making sure that we're all working from the same page, so that's, that's our next big step, and so the movement on that has been good. I also met with on three twenty-three, the COCC group, in reference to an update to Tucasa. On three twenty-four, NMAC meeting in Lordsburg on the legislature, I gave a report on that already, and also gave to the different affiliates the information that I picked up from that meeting. Four two, opening ceremonies for the Cliff Hila Little League, that was a lot of fun, that's one of the fun things we do. That was a lot of fun. Four fourteen, life of a DWI offender, offender brought on by the W, or the DWI Task Force Cindy McLean, she does an outstanding job, I tell you what, we're lucky to have her, she's the top in the state as far as that program is concerned. And what I did in that is that I played like a judge, and I did sentencings for five hours. So she works you hard when you volunteer for her, so be careful whoever's coming behind me, but it's well worth the time. Four fifteen, attended the new exhibit of Southwest Museum, or Southwest Exhibit of Southwest Women at the, our museum, and I really would promote that. It's a good exhibit, everything from the Apaches to women that came over from very comfortable times, back east, and suffered through some very difficult times, so it's, it was very informative. Four eighteen, NMAC, I attended by phone, they were having a storm up in Santa Fe on the Criminal Justice Reform Policy Committee. I'm not going to go into, I think Steve covered that today, so I'm not going to go into that, but I would highly recommend, like I did at the work session, Sheriff, and particularly you, it's really important to get together with your affiliate leaders. We've got some really, really important legislature that we need to put together, and have it done really by the end of the summer, so we can start talking to our legislators about it. Four nineteen, had a real interesting meeting at HMS with Dr. Bowen and staff in reference to a, it's referred to as ACES, A-C-E-S, in reference to adverse childhood experiences. That was fascinating, and it's something that I like to see our community to get involved with. I talked to the mayor of Silver City about it, about possibly sending someone to a conference back in Walla Walla, Washington, where they've made their community an ACES community, and it has changed the whole community as far as crime and such. But ACES is adverse childhood experiences with harm children's developing brains, even before they're born. The pushing, the shoving, the beatings and stuff can cause the brain to not develop. It is unreal, and the trouble is, there's treatment, not for that part, but once they're born and such, once they're born, to send them to treatment, they can help them. Like we're talking about drugs and violent crime and such, they can help them. It literally changes, this pushing, shoving, yelling, hurting, causes the DNA to change in a person. And I didn't know that it did change, I thought you was born with it and that's it, but it causes it to change prior to birth and then after birth, so it's quite, quite interesting. But anyhow, a children's developing brain so profoundly that it affects, the effects show up decades later, they're suggesting four generations. They cause much of the chronic disease, most mental illnesses, and can be linked to most violent behaviors. Dispatch meeting, had a meeting there, and we, I talked about that for a little bit. Oh, I don't, that's going to be it, that's all I got.
Okay, so we had a conflict with our meeting in May already, and we moved it once to the tenth and twelfth, and then we found out we moved it right on top of the state high school baseball championships. So I think what we'll do is we will hold a work session meeting on the tenth, we'll just do them both. Is that okay with you, Commissioner, Commissioner? So we will cancel the meeting on the twelfth, and we will do both of them on the tenth. And with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.